Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the roll call, tonight I have all board members present. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda tonight? I do have one amendment to the agenda to propose moving Resolution G under New Business up to Resolution, to make it to A for the sale of bonds and then adding in the Green School announcement in B thus moving to the Winter Activities Report as C such as follows. Do I have a motion to accept amended agenda? Make that motion. Hi, Tom. Second by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the wire transfer dispersment summary, the bank reconciliation statement, and approval of the board meeting minutes from the March 4th, the March 25th study session, and the board meeting on March 27th. Resignations, terminations, and non-annuels as follows. And I have the resolution to accept the gifts which by state law I'm required to read. Sit in here, Marty.
Oh, yep.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Stacy, second.
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. The verbiage for the... I'll read off this one. The resolution for acceptance of gifts, whereas the Thawing have generously donated to the Prior Lake Savage School District monetary donation of $66 from Shane and Abby Cussera to Jeffers Pond through the Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign, a donation of $47.31 from Jane Campton to Jeffers Pond through the Wells Fargo Community Challenge Support Campaign, a donation of $150 from Ameriprise Financial for Hidden Oaks School Student Scholarship Program, $200 from Mr. and Mrs. Decker to the Jeffers Pond through Ameriprise Financial for Music, Mrs. Duer's class, a donation of $85.80 anonymously through the United Way for Jeffers Pond Elementary, a donation of $100 from Jeffrey and Noreen Dix through Emeris Financial for the high school, a donation of $29.26 from Laura Willett for Hidden Oaks Middle School, a donation of $2,500 from Jeff Peter Meyer for audio in the weight room at the high school, a donation of $1,000 from the Prior Lake Football Boosters for the Prior Lake High School, a donation from the Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign as follows: $126.93 from Loretta Spurley, $57.69 from Breon Silman, $46.14 from Melissa Kesme, $36 from J. Lo Plant, $25 from Laura Herdix, and $150 from Diane Hart. A value of kind of three sets of golf clubs and accessories from Steve Fisher for the Physical Education Department at the high school, approximate value of $400. Whereas there are no conditions with these gifts, therefore be it resolved by the Prior Lake Savage Area School Board that we gratefully accept these gifts. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts to the Prior Lake Savage School District?
So moved.
By Rich, second.
Second.
By Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Thank you. That's a new formality for us from the state of Minnesota. Moving on to Laker Pride, I have the Youth and Government Mentors and Members if they're present. Come forward, please.
Okay, we have eighth grade teacher over here from Twin Oaks, Allison Zach, and Dave Broth from the YMCA. And were we having a student present as well?
Our student that wanted to be present, Spencer Will, is actually at a band concert tonight, so.
Multiple demands.
Yes.
Multiple demands. We have a wonderful partnership with the YMCA, and one of the ways that we've been partnering in growing a program, this is the Youth and Government Program, Allison Zach has taken that on and has had a great year with it. Do you want to tell us about what happened with your students?
Absolutely. If that's okay, I'll have Dave kind of explain real quick what it is.
Sure. YMCA Youth and Government is a civic leadership program that's run through the YMCA. It was actually founded in 1946, so it's been longstanding in the state. And this year, we had about 1,500 participants around the state attend our Model Assembly, which is a mob government that covers over four days in January, and then a model United Nations program that serves about 500 people. So we started this program about three years ago in Prior Lake, and we're serving eight to 10 kids a year. And it's currently been turned into a lettering program, too, so we anticipate the numbers to grow rapidly over the next few years. So with partnerships with the school districts and teachers to have us come in and share these opportunities, we're able to get kids involved in different civic leadership programs and understanding government community a lot better.
And I had one student attend the Model U.N. Nations activity, and he did, actually, we counted that also as his service requirement, and he had just a wonderful experience. He met, you know, many different kids from different schools and participated in this wonderful kind of active, active piece of government, learning about government. He came back and shared it with our entire class and kind of got the kids excited. I think, you know, the more kids that go, the more kids will want to go, especially when it comes to middle schoolers. They have a little bit of peer pressure, so I think it'll grow through the years.
Well, congratulations, Allison, and thank you, Dave, for representing the Y today. We have our Laker certificates for you, and I have one for also for Spencer Will.
Thank you.
Do I have the Optimist Club? Come on forward.
We have another wonderful partner, and that is the Optimist Club. The Prior Lake Optimist Club has been a fabulous partner of ours for many, many years. One of our first partners, which we missed last week when we were celebrating due to the snowstorm, we weren't able to recognize them. We're coming to one of your meetings very soon. But tonight, we're recognizing the students that have won the Optimist Oratorical and the Optimist Essay Contest, two different contests that the Optimist Club organizes and provides for us. So we have students that have won and the contest, and so you want to tell us who you are? We'll pass the microphone, you can tell us who you are.
Well, I'm Michael Lorenzer, President of the Optimist Club here in Prior Lake.
Hi, I'm Michaela Rush, and I go to the high school, and I'm a part of the Junior Optimist Club.
Hi, my name is Maddie Saban, I'm a senior, and I also go to Prior Lake High School.
My name is Sanjana Christian Murphy, and I'm in elementary school, and I go to Harriet Bishop Elementary.
I'm Parker Jornby, and I go to Hidden Oaks Middle School.
I'm Sue Heaton, and I coordinated the oratorical contest, and I'd also like to point out Lee Schimmick here, who is the essay coordinator. Without these people, this would not be happening, so we have a great team.
And we have great opportunities for our students to participate in the oratorical. They have to prepare a speech, and they have to give it multiple times in practice. They have wonderful coaches that Sue Heaton really works hard to recruit and is a live part of that process. So we're very proud of all of you and your achievements in our high school, junior optimists, for helping, being a great advocate for the students and a role model. So that's awesome. So we have a few certificates we're going to hand out to you and congratulate you. These two young ladies are our essay winners of the essay contest, so that's why they're standing here with our technical students. Maddie Saban, she's right here. Michaela, congratulations to both of you. Congratulations. And then Tori could not be here today to give her students, so I will give these to you.
Eric, if you want to come forward with your sports teams that are represented tonight. I know we have gymnastics, wrestling, the dance teams, and individual swimming and speech. Is he shy? Does he want to talk?
His fellow wrestlers left him up.
Ladies and gentlemen, board members, these are representatives of our state participants this year. We've got Hanny Hannah, Jenna, right, Annika, she's got a sister that looks just like her, and Ryan Norton. So these are two of our dancers, first time ever with dance, making it to the state tournament. Annika represents our gymnastics team, first time ever making it to the state tournament, and Ryan represents our wrestling team. And were you at three years in a row? Three years in a row for Ryan making it to the state tournament? So these are our captains of those teams.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Great seasons.
We're going to step back just for one minute. We have to do a roll call vote on the acceptance of gifts. Like I said, it's a new policy from the state of Minnesota, so I have a motion to second to accept the gifts as read. Chad?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes seven zero. Thanks, Lee. At this point, we'll have the open forum. We have 15 minutes set aside for citizens to give input to the board about that. It's basically dialogue from the community to the board for the board to listen. And I guess we have a couple of people tonight who have filled out some forms. Dean, I'm not sure if you wanted to speak or if you wanted to have the other members. Okay, yeah, and they're welcome to come forward if they want. Yeah, Jesse, Jesse wanted to talk.
Thank you. My name is Dean Newman. I'm a parent of Ari Newman, who's a junior at Prior Lake High School. And we're here tonight to talk about a class, German 4 S2S class, that was offered for enrollment but is not being offered for the fall because of the number of people that signed up for the class. We're here today to ask the board to work with Principal Lund and the German teachers to explore every opportunity, every possibility, to try to offer this class for these students who feel very committed to studying the German language. We have three students here, we have some ideas and thoughts about why this is important.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jesse Schneider, and I'm a junior at the high school. And first and foremost, I would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you today. We are here on behalf of the students of German 4 S2S, and we are here because we believe we should be able to have German 4 S2S despite the fact we do not have the required amount of students. Here are some reasons why we think German 4 S2S would be a good addition to Prior Lake High School. Well, first off, I want to let you know that we aren't here because our teachers are making us. We're here because we want to be, and we want to have the class. And two, we want to have this class because we want to continue on in German into the future, and we don't just see it as just another credit needed to graduate. We created a petition that 195 students signed in support of us that was circulated through the German classes, and I'd like to show that to you guys if you don't mind.
My name is Austin Peaton, I'm also a junior at Prior Lake High School, and this petition that Jesse's passing around wasn't only signed by people taking German 4 S2S next year, but also some that would take it in the future if you allowed it at the high school. We've worked, some of us in the room here have worked very hard to get to where we're at since middle school. I personally started in eighth grade with the German program, and now I'm in 11th grade in the last year, what would be my last year, and I really want to continue and get myself prepared before I go to college. If we get this chance, we don't get to take a year off, and we don't lose some of the knowledge that we would if we took that year off, and we get college credit for taking the class and doing well in the class, which I anticipate doing. We can test into higher classes into college, and it would get better prestige for Prior Lake High School around, I guess, the state. Most of the students who signed up for this class would be in their fifth year of German, and it wouldn't just be some big, large group of people who, some of them didn't care, it'd be a smaller group that actually cared and actually wanted to be in this class. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ari Newman. I am currently a junior at Prior Lake High School. I would like to add some points about why I think we should have this class. All of us are at a pivotal point in this language. We are becoming, we are at a point of almost becoming fluent, and if we did not have this class, this gap in this, in our language would significantly hinder our progress if we wanted to continue on in the German language. Also, this is not a question of teacher qualification. There, I can tell you right now, there are some of the best educators I've ever had in my high school career. They worked very hard with Saint College State University to get this approved. I think they would be very pleased to see this class go through. And once again, I would like to thank you for your time letting us display our opinions about this matter. We hope that you take our concerns under consideration. We hope you can make an exemption because this will not only better we, the students, but also the foreign language education program at Prior Lake High School and future generations down the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other members of the community who'd like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Personnel items with Matt.
First item on the agenda, personnel is the approval of candidates for employment. I recommend the following candidates for employment and seating board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment?
So moved.
By Lee?
Second.
By Tom? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All abstained.
Okay. That carries six, zero, and one.
And next, I present the following needs of absence and seating board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the leave of absences as follows?
So moved.
By Dan, second. By Stacy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero.
And next, I'm presenting the retirement of three longtime employees from the district. First of all, in media support of Westwood with 26 years of service in the district, Michelle Ellinvo. Secondly, the head building secretary from Hidden Oaks with 30 years of experience, Linda Hoy. And thirdly, Jill Cooper, a third grade teacher at Greenwood with 20 years of experience. And I can say that I've had the opportunity to work with all three of these employees. I know that they are held in the highest regard and that they will be missed. And just briefly, too, a quick reminder that the district will be holding its annual retirement celebration on Wednesday, May 15th, at Twin Oaks Middle School, and that's from 3:30 to 5:30.
Do I have a motion to accept the district retirements as follows? By Tom?
Second.
Second by Chad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero.
All right, and next, I have four job descriptions to bring report to the board, the first of which is the Special Education Program Specialist, but this was a position that was foreapproved recently, it is a new position within the special ed department. And then secondly, I'll go through them and see if there are any questions on any individuals. Secondly, a new position of a physical therapist, this is also a new position in the district. We've been offering this service over time, it's not into service simply in the way in which we're offering it, which is to provide that service in-house, which is significantly more affordable, and we also believe that it will increase the quality of the programming that we're able to offer within physical therapy. And then thirdly, I do think this one's been miscategorized as a new job description. We have a psychologist job description there that is actually a revision as opposed to a new job description. We have been offering this service, but we want to take the opportunity to revise that job description. And then lastly, also a revised job description is that of the outside maintenance person.
Do I have a motion to, okay, do I have a motion to accept the approval of the job descriptions as follows?
So moved.
By Dan?
Second.
By Lee? Is there any questions or discussion on this? I have one, just the current psychologist is currently qualified under the, what we have to change in the language for that job description, so there is no job loss with that?
That's correct.
Okay.
We employ a number of school psychologists, all of them meet the qualifications.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero.
All right, and lastly, I have an additional staff request. I will actually represent another staff request later in the board meeting, but first, an educational support position. This is a request for an additional robotics assistant coach for the following school year. And as we've taken more of the, more of that programming on over time as a district, this is a position that we've identified as a need in order to keep that program robust and keep the good work they've been doing moving.
Do I have a motion to accept the additional staffing for the robotics assistant coach?
So moved.
By Stacy? Second by Tom? Any questions?
I just have one question. What are the numbers that are becoming involved with robotics now?
The numbers for student, it's still, 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 still.
Current staffing is a head coach with one assistant?
With, with two part-time.
Two, two part-time, okay. Sure.
I believe that when those two part-time assistants, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, do help organize the middle school program as well?
Yes, they're, they're involved in the, well, kind of the JV, the FTC program versus the FRC program.
So we're suggesting holding those two positions as is and then creating an assistant robotics coach for the high school varsity program. Correct. As we move from a parent organized and run organization that Joe Passifero started and has done an excellent job of growing over these years, we're now taking it into the district, and so we believe we need to have the two positions in order to make it robust and make sure we have the safety of the students at the front of our vision of what we're doing at all times.
Well, I think this program has grown, I'm guessing, every year. I mean, from what I've heard, I just, I'm assuming there's good numbers, right?
Do I have a motion to accept the additional staffing of the robotics assistant coach?
So moved.
By Rich?
Second.
By Tom? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Moving on to New Business, we have the resolution for the sale of bonds.
Good evening, Chair Sorenson, board members. Dr. Grover, Gary Olson from Alistz Associates, our financial advisors, is here tonight to speak on these resolutions for the sale of bonds. Earlier this evening, we handed out two pre-sale reports for discussion, and so you can see what the possibilities will be for the sale of these bonds, and I'll let Gary talk through this with you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Grover, members of the board. Pleasure to be here. We have two different bonds. These have been in the planning stage for quite some time now and are part of a big, bigger overall structure. The first one I want to talk about is the twelve and a half million dollar general obligation alternative facility bonds, 2013A. And these are bonds that are going to issue to deal with health and safety issues that are eligible under the Health and Safety Program and have been approved by the Department of Ed and your five-year plan. The bonds will be approximately 13 and 15 years, eight months long, with maturities in years 22 to 26. And the reason for the delay in the maturities is, remember, what we're trying to do is build this whole plan with all the different moving parts without any tax increase. And so if you look at your existing debt, it drops off as we get down to those later years, so that's, that's the time when we can add in the new, the new debt. So that's why, that's why the delay there. And these bonds, not all of them, but a significant portion of them will be eligible to be refunded at some point down the ride, down the road. I'm not going to go through all these things. You will get rated by Moody's and Investor Service. You already have a AA3, and last time we did the refunding, we went through what we call a conference call where we talked to Moody's, and we will be doing that again coming up shortly. When we look at the timeframe, you can see that. Now, we're doing something a little bit different with these bonds, and we did this with your refunding a couple of years ago as well. Rather than, typically what we do is we would schedule the bond sale for one of your board meetings, which our next ones are May 6th and May 20th. The problem is, right now, the bond sale calendar is very, very full, and there's a lot of competition. You know, if you sell bonds on a certain day, the underwriter's looking, you know, they can pick and choose kind of which bond, so we're looking for some flexibility as to when we sell those bonds. So the idea is, in the resolutions tonight, what you will do is authorize the board chair and the superintendent to approve those resolutions as long as they meet a certain parameter. And if that, if that works, then what happens is we take the bids, as long as they're good bids and within what we think reasonable, reasonable rates, and everybody's on board, the board chair and superintendent authorize that, and then the next meeting, this will happen on May 15th. And then the next meeting, this will happen on May fifteenth, and then on May twentieth at your next board meeting, the board would authorize, would pass a resolution that authorizes the action that the board chair and superintendent have taken. So these boards will still have an opportunity to step in on this as well. And that gives us a little flexibility and hopefully we can sell the bonds on a day when the calendar isn't so crowded and there isn't quite so much competition for bids. The other key piece to this is, if you look on page two at the top, we will be coming back in the next month or two. You have a fifty-five million dollar bond issued that is eligible to be advanced refunded. And part of the way we're fitting all this, all these pieces together and trying, and controlling the tax impact is by doing a refunding on those bonds and lowering taxes by, by the savings on the refunding. The other thing we probably will be doing is, we may end up, in order to make it all fit and work, we probably may add a little, we may stretch out the term of the existing bonds so that we get enough refunding savings in the first couple of years to keep that tax rate level over the time. So the refunding will be part of this overall plan. The other piece is continuing disclosure is something you're already doing. That's just notifications that you have to do every year. When you sell bonds, let's say now you're going to sell bonds, some of those bonds are going to be out through till twenty-twenty-six. If somebody looks out and comes out in twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two and says, hmm, I might be interested in buying some of those Prior Lake bonds, but I want to know a little bit about Prior Lake School District, they don't want to go all the way back to the official statement that you prepared when you sold the bonds. They want to know more about what your current conditions are. And that's what continuing disclosure does, is you file a report on an annual basis that gives investors information about your... As I said, you are, you will be rated by Moody's. You have a double A three rating. You will also participate, and you've already adopted a resolution to participate in what's called the state credit enhancement program. That means the state, in addition to your full faith and pledge to levy taxes and make your bond payments, the state also stands behind, stands behind your bonds. There's no cost, except you make your bond payments three days early, and if something would ever happen that you didn't make the bond payment, the state would step in, pay the bondholders, and then they would get the money back by either making you, in the future, levy a tax levy or reducing your state aids. What that does is that nice comfort for the investors and that they know that the bond payments are going to be made on time, so that gives you a lower interest rate. Arbitrage is another thing that we talk about. What arbitrage represents is when you sell bonds, you're selling bonds at a tax-exempt rate, you get the money in, you're not spending it all the first day you get the money, you're going to get twelve million dollars, and you're not going to, Julie's not going to spend it the next day. And so meanwhile, what she's going to do is invest those dollars, and there's rules and regulations about how you, how much, how you can, the IRS doesn't want you making a lot of money, making money on this unless you have certain exemptions, but it's a whole set of complicated rules, but we'll make, we'll have to make sure that those get followed as well. The next page, then, if you look at page three, is kind of a timeline. Back on March fourth, the board authorized the issuance of these bonds, and they have since published notices that you, of your intent to sell those bonds. Tonight, you're looking at approving the resolution to set that parameter for the sale on the fifteenth. The week of the twenty-ninth, next week, we will actually be issuing what's called an official statement. If you've been on the board for a while, you remember that's a thick document, it's like a prospectus that goes out to the investors. It gives all kinds of information about your district, size of your district, number of employees, number of students, largest taxpayers, largest employers, all kinds of information that investors might want. Then the week of the, May sixth, we will be talking to Moody's Investor Service again as they get ready to rate your bonds, we'll receive the bids on the fifteenth. And then, as I said, on the twentieth, you'll actually come, we'll come back here, present the bids, and at that time you'll pass a resolution ratifying the action of the board chair and the superintendent. And the closing date, you'll actually have the wire transfer occur in about June. Then I do have a sources and uses table. This kind of shows where the twelve and a half million comes from, the twelve and a half million per amount of the bonds. Plus, as I said, Julie, you'll earn a little interest. Unfortunately, interest rates aren't very good right now, so there's not a lot to be made, but you will be able to earn some. Allowance for discount bidding, that's like points on a mortgage. The underwriter may or may not take that. If they don't take it, it goes to the debt service fund and can be used to pay debt service. Legal and fiscal costs are, costs for your financial advisor fee, your bond attorney fee, the writing agency fee, some paying agents and county certificates that we need to get in order to do the official statement. So you'll have about twelve million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars available to fund those, those projects. And then on the back is a very preliminary estimate of the, of what the schedule will look like. We will be fine-tuning this now. These rates are probably higher than where they really are, but we want to be conservative and not set something up with expectations and then have the bond market come in. And we do have until May fifteenth for that, for interest rates to change. Hopefully they'll go down rather than up, but we don't know. So that's kind of where we're at with that one. Then the second issue is the pre-sale report for the general obligation capital facility bonds. And these are to fund deferred maintenance projects, and they're issued under a different statute, one twenty-three B sixty-two. Now, the thing to remember about these is they have no tax impact. What happens is, the Department of Education will give you a debt, a levy in the debt service fund to make the annual payments on these bonds, but they'll turn around and reduce your general fund levy by the same amount, and essentially that amount will come out of your operating capital, that roughly two hundred dollars a pupil unit that you get for equipment and facility maintenance. So there's actually no tax impact to these. And so these are scheduled as a level principal and interest payment. They, by statute, they can exceed fifteen years, and since payments are typically February first and August first, we have to, we end up with a total maturity of about fourteen years and eight months, although they end in, they end before the fifteenth year hits. Again, because you're issuing more than ten million dollars, the bank qualification, the ratings are all the same. Again, we're going to go through the same rating process with these, with the parameters resolution, and then the actual bids coming in on May fifteenth, and then the board action on May twentieth. So we're going to go through, go through that same process with these bids as well. Again, we're going to be doing the refunding. In this particular case, it really doesn't affect these bonds because, again, these bonds create no tax impact. Again, we're going to continue to follow the rules on continuing disclosure, credit enhancement, and arbitrage. And again, if you look, we have a timeframe then on page three, which mimics the timeframe for the other bonds, same dates, same process. And then we have a sources and uses for the five million, three eighty. Again, a small amount of interest earned, an allowance for discount bidding again, and then some legal and fiscal costs, a little bit of rounding because we have to sell bonds in five thousand dollar increments, and so we end up with about five point three million dollars available for these projects. So those are the two, those are the, that's the kind of the information or background. Now, the two resolutions you have before you, when we put these together a while ago, we didn't have, we wanted to kind of wait on the, on the interest rate parameters we put in there, kind of try and keep track of where the market is. And we, we want to be conservative on these. We very well expect real interest rates to be less than what we're going to put into, into here, and certainly this isn't going to impact the way the underwriters bid. They're going to bid on that day based on where the market is. The one thing I would be a little bit concerned about is if we cut it too close, and let's say we set the interest rate and then the bids come in, you know, just this much higher, you're in a position where you have to reject the bids and go through the process again, and that's going to delay the, delay the, getting the dollars available, which Julie needs to, to start making bill, payments on bills. So, so we are being a little bit conservative on this, and so what we're suggesting in the first one, which is the alt facility bond, we're suggesting we put in a rate of three point three percent there. We expect it to be fully below that. In fact, if you look at the run we did, I think it's at like about three point one three or something like that. But we want to be a little bit conservative. We don't want, we want to make sure we have a little bit of room for the market to move between now and then. So that's, that's what the first resolution would do. It just modifies that resolution that you had adopted back in March and puts this parameter in so that we can have a little more flexibility in how you sell the bonds. And then the second resolution would have a rate of three percent. It's actually technically a little bit longer, but you're paying bonds over the, you're paying interest or principal payments every year because you're not worrying about the tax impact, so it's level PNI. Or if you look at the second schedule, all the payments are in the last four or five years, and so that's why they're, it's carrying a little bit higher interest rate. So those are the two, those are the two resolutions that are before you. Again, since they're resolutions, they will call for, they will call votes. If you have any questions, I'd certainly be glad to answer.
Do I have a motion to accept the alternative facilities bond series two thousand thirteen A and the facilities bond series two thousand thirteen B? By Tom?
I have two separate votes.
Two votes, okay. Alternative facilities bond series two thousand thirteen A. By Tom?
Second.
Second by Stacy? Any questions?
This is the one that we would have at three point three percent in that.
The larger of the two. Any questions, anyone?
Yeah, it'd be in paragraph two there, about two-thirds of the way down, there's a blank percent, and that would be three point three.
Okay.
And just to be sure that anything above three point three then would automatically be a no?
Correct. But like I said, I think we, two things I can say about that. One, I think we've built, you know, we've built some cushion in there. And second, we will continue to watch the market between now and, you have another meeting on May sixth, and if something happens, we can come back and talk to you on May sixth and say, we need to fine-tune this a little. So we would have a second opportunity if, hopefully we shouldn't need it, but if we did, we would have a second opportunity to adjust.
Have any motion, second? It's a roll call vote. Chad?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
That carries seven, zero. Do I have a motion to accept the facilities bond series two thousand thirteen Bravo?
So moved.
By Dan?
Second.
By Chad? Questions on this one? This is the one that will be three point zero.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Any questions? Having a motion, second? Chad?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aye. Dan?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
That carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, drive safe. We have a important announcement of an award we received today. So then?
Yes, I'd like to invite Amy Katnan and Caroline Warner, did you want to come up also representing Jeffers Pond? Today is Arbor Day. I know you may not believe that when you look outside this evening because it's snowing again, but it is Arbor Day, and we were waiting very anxiously for this day to come, knowing that our school, our school, elementary school, Jeffers Pond, and our entire district were up for awards from the Department of Education. And we waited patiently, and this morning we received very good news that Jeffers Pond has been named a national green school award, and our school district, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, has received the district sustainability award by the federal government, and we're very, very excited. Amy helped write, chaired writing that, and Caroline is here as a participant of that, a helper in writing that, and also both of them representing a team of people that participated in this process. So Amy?
Good evening, Chair Sorenson, members of the board, and Dr. Grover. As Dr. Grover said, my name is Amy Katnan, and I'm the curriculum coordinator for the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Our application for the Green Ribbon Schools' recognition began back in November with a comprehensive application that was aimed at drawing out our achievements and progress in three areas. One, reducing environmental impacts and costs. Two, improving the health and wellness of students and staff. And three, providing effective environmental and sustainability education incorporating STEM, civic skills, and green career pathways. An outstanding team of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' staff members assembled to complete the initial application. I would like to thank the following staff members for their time, efforts, and enthusiasm towards the completion of both the Jeffers Pond Elementary School and the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' district applications. Jim Delwo, Sherry Bruner, Paul Hadden, Daryl Borchar, Jean Winters, Melissa Canetl, Caroline Warner, Sarah Aker, LeAnn Wykel, Kay Dickie, and Lindsay Comstock. These individuals shared their knowledge and expertise of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' culture and practices in multiple, in multiple areas, such as K-12 curriculum and environmental education programming, transportation, energy usage, food and nutrition, and the health and wellness of staff and students. At the end of January, we learned that both of our applications were finalists for state recognition. Essays highlighting our environmental education curriculum, sustainability practices, outdoor learning spaces, and community partnerships were submitted to the Minnesota Department of Education. We were deeply proud to learn of this national recognition this morning. As the acting administrator of the Environmental Protection Agency said during the press conference, "We recognize the Green Ribbon Schools for their remarkable efforts to create healthier learning spaces and educate students on the importance of environmental protection. The students who attend these schools are better prepared than ever to become the next generation of environmental stewards and bring about a healthier, more sustainable future." We believe this embodies the culture of the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the next step is that we will receive information from the Department of Education about an award ceremony that will take place in Washington, DC on June third. So we're hoping to send a delegation there to receive that award, and we're looking forward to giving you more information when we have it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Eric, we haven't held off. You're up. Hey, twenty minutes late, but he'll...
He'll catch us off.
It's all right, Tate's at burn, I just play him basketball, so he needs the extra shooting anyway.
He's going to be so happy.
supportive, isn't it? Yeah.
High stream. Chairman Sorenson, board members, Dr. Grover, I'm going to give a update on winter sports. We're going to continue winter sports through April, so this won't be finalized, but we'll go from there. Funny story before I get started, you know, in trying to schedule some spring sports, and some of you may have seen this in the paper, last Thursday, we scheduled a girls' lacrosse game for the Savage Dome and a, and a baseball game for the Metrodome. Well, lo and behold, we had a snowstorm and we had to cancel both of our indoor games as well. So that's just kind of the way that all, about three hundred and sixty AVs are feeling at this point. As far as winter goes, we had an absolutely outstanding winter on the court, in the classroom, on the stage, and everything. And I'm just going to kind of give you a, a quick overview of what happened and then, and then some statistics. So wrestling, our wrestling team is absolutely phenomenal, ended up second in the conference again to Apple Valley, and then a couple of the board members and Dr. Grover got to watch us wrestle Apple Valley in the state tournament. And even though we lost, we are making gains on Apple Valley. Two years ago, we lost to them seventy to nothing in the state semifinals. Last year, I believe it was sixty-seven to three, and this year was thirty-nine sixteen, I believe, and they won eight matches, we won six. So I, I believe next year we are going to get over that hump against Apple Valley. But another outstanding year for, for Coach Joe Block and, and the wrestling program. Alex Hart, Tanner Johnshoe, and Blake Carlisle also the next couple of days, then each, each won third-place medals. So that was awesome. Girls' basketball, nine and eighteen, seven eleven, struggled throughout the year. We lost our top player, who's going to South Dakota State, tore her ACL about halfway through the year. Board member White and I were talking at one point that, you know, they actually played as hard as they possibly could, and it actually was, the record isn't indicative of, of how well this team worked together. Boys' basketball, another outstanding year for, for Coach Folkey, nineteen, seven, thirteen and five in the conference. Tough loss in sections, we lost the opening round... Tough loss in sections, we lost the opening round section game to Lakeville South. One of the Lakeville South players basically caught lightning in a bottle, went eight for eleven from behind the arc and sealed our fate on that one. But overall, outstanding year. Girls' hockey, we continue to struggle in that, four and twenty-two. This is our coach, we've had three coaches in the last five years, so Todd's working on building a program now. This will be his third year coming up and hopefully we can move forward with that. Boys' hockey had an outstanding year, ended up sixteen and nine, eleven and six in the conference. Unfortunately, lost third year in a row in the section semifinals, lost to Burnsville, which is an ouch, lost two to one over at Breymar Arena. But this is a program on the rise and I, and I think in the next year or so, we'll see them at the X L Center very soon. Boys' swimming and diving, five and four in conference, fifth in sections, fourteenth overall in states. Those are your state participants listed down there. Couple of the highlights of state, Alex Janess and Marshall Heskin both placed, but we also broke a record for our two hundred, two hundred free relay. We broke a record that we had from nineteen ninety-four. So that was, that was a pretty awesome job by, by those kids and outstanding job in state. Nordic ski, and you'll see later on a slide, Coach Kevin Panzer keeps getting more and more athletes out. And talk about a struggle, we look at all the snow we had now. Our home course is Murphy Hanahan and we haven't skied there the last two years. We've had to go up to Anoka, to Elm Creek up there, we've had to go to Green Acres over in Lake Elmo, kind of by our neck of the woods that one time, Dr. Grover. So we, we've had to travel everywhere just to try to get, try to get some skiing in. But those kids stick with it and it's an absolutely outstanding program. Our cheer, they were national qualifiers for the first time ever this year, were able to travel down to Florida, which was an awesome experience for them. They finished twenty-first down there, but, but the cheerleaders, a tight knit group that really worked well together. Dance line, you met a couple of those captains earlier today. This is a program that, a couple of years ago, I was looking at some old statistics. Couple of years ago, they finished fourteenth in sections, sixteenth in sections. Well, they've really stepped it up. They were third in sections this year behind Eastview and, and Burnsville and qualified for the state, state dance meet for the first time ever. And board member Well got to, got to see a state dance competition, a little bit different than soccer, but, but it, it was awesome for those kids and the sheer joy. Quick story for you, I was handing out the medals at, at the section meet and, and one of the participants, as I was giving her her medal, just came up and gave me a big old bear hug. And it was just, that sheer jubilation was awesome. Knowledge Bowl, Andy Franklin and Brian Olson coached this team and they keep getting kids out as well. An awesome group of kids. They fared well, but Chaska and Shanhasen have some, some really good teams as well as St. Thomas. So we were sixth in the conference in the regular season and the conference is much broader than, than our ten schools. And then they were ninth at the regionals, so, so didn't qualify for the, for the state, but still in a good year. Mock trial, Ms. Schaefer, once again, we keep getting kids out, which is absolutely what we want with our activities. They were third in the SSC tournament and then they made it through three rounds of state. You have to, you have to go through six rounds of state in order to, to qualify for the finals. Gymnastics, Annika was here tonight, they were section champions for the first time ever. And this was also just an awesome thing. I actually went from, I'm trying to think of what event I was at. Anyway, I walk into Lakeville North and they're standing down there and they see me and they go, "We're winning right now." And it was, it was just, this team, I used them as an example. They started out the year, they scored a hundred and twenty-eight points and I used that as, we try to improve one percent every day. Their final score at the state then was one forty-one point eight, something like that. And constant improvement on their skills. So it was great to see them striving for success. One act play, another good show, third in the subsections. Robotics, we talked to them, talked about them a little bit. This program is continuing to, continuing to grow. I talked to Mr. Olson today, who's going to help chaperone the trip to St. Louis. They're ranked eighth in the world, not just the state, but in the world. So we're talking thousands of robotics teams that are going to meet at, in St. Louis and, and we're pretty high. Joe Volm, the assistant, one of the assistant coaches, sent out a video. The game this year is, is throwing frisbees into a small, what's the dimensions, Dave? I don't know, eighteen inch?
About like that.
Yeah, about like that. And this robot's sitting in the corner just going, and it, it wouldn't miss. So it was pretty, it was pretty cool to see. So they're doing really well. Speech team, unfortunately, we didn't have anyone here tonight, but they were section runners-up for the third year in a row. Lakeville North won the section. Lakeville North is, has a, a team that's, that's been really good for, for many years. We had eight participants that went to state and that was, that was last Friday morning. Yeah. So they, they braved the weather, they got up and hopped on a bus at six-thirty and drove up to Blaine. And then Aaron Bojer won third in creative expression. Now, a little bit about Aaron, Aaron was also starring in the play that night. So Aaron was up all day, made it through the preliminary rounds, quarterfinals, semifinals, finals of state speech, and then had to get driven back to make the opening curtain for Harvey starting at seven o'clock. Unfortunately, he didn't even get to, to go onstage and get his medal, but he was onstage as, as, as part of the play. So that was pretty, pretty cool. Spring play was Harvey. Hopefully, you got to go out and see that. Dave and I were talking earlier, one of the best performances that I've seen in my five years. Those kids were absolutely incredible and a very interesting story about an imaginary rabbit, but it was, it was a great performance by, by those kids. Band, Keith and Justin are doing an amazing job of stepping up with the band and these are just some of the, the people that have made the all-state band, so I put, put them on there. As far as surveys goes, I've kind of switched it up a little bit and I'll explain that. In partnering with PLA Y, we're, we're using a program called Positive Coaching Alliance and it's really to try to partner with the parents and the volunteer coaches of PLA Y and all of us and trying to, you know, yeah, it's, it's about winning, but it's about winning and life lessons as well. So this survey kind of goes through some of those things that, that we're trying to teach with our kids about character and honor as well as PLA Y. And the idea is to try to make it a K-12 cohesiveness all the way from, you know, when they start out as little kids in T-ball or whatever, all the way up through the program. So you'll see the questions, I put the questions on there so you can kind of have an idea. One of the things that we try to teach is roots, which is rules, opponents, officials, teammates, and respect for oneself. So this is the parent side and as you can see, this is talking about the coach from the parent perspective. So obeying the rules, showing respect for officials, treating the players with respect, and then also treating the opponents with, with respect. And then the other, second part there is redefining winner. So emphasizing effort, learning, and improvement, which is learning from our mistakes. And that's one of the vital things that, that we're trying to emphasize within athletics and activities is it's okay to fail. I did a presentation to the ninth graders on Wednesday while the sophomores and juniors were taking their MCA tests. And one of the little bits in there is, is a piece by Michael Jordan and it talks about how many times he failed so he could succeed. And that's one of the things that we really try to emphasize. So within that then, rewarded effort, not just results, help players learn and improve and then bounce back from mistakes. So, you know, every time a kid knows that he makes a mistake, but how do we help them to get better from that and not just, just chew them out? And then the last part is filling the emotional tank with positive encouragements and then use the positive reinforcement, encourage players to do their best, make sports fun. Every time we do a survey, why do you play sports or why are you in activities? It's because they want to have fun. And, and that's what I do when I talk to kids. And then, you know, do our coaches listen to the players? And then the last, the last question that we had on there, would you like your student to play for this coach again? And, you know, eighty-five and a half percent said yes. I think that's a pretty positive statement right there. And then we did the same thing with, with our students, with honoring the game, obeying the rules, and this is, they're talking about their coach, redefining as a winner, filling the emotional tank, and then, and then, would you like to play for this coach again? And we had seventy-nine percent. So overall, I felt pretty good about, about the surveys and, you know, a lot of times we always hear about the negative and we focus on the negative, but ninety-five percent of it's, ninety-five percent of it's positive. Just quickly, going through some expenditures and this doesn't have, this is just athletics, this does not have the activities on here. But I just wanted to briefly go through this and we went through this a couple of years ago, I don't think we talked about it last year. So these are just some of the statistics and contributions that we've had within our athletic side and, and this is fall cost per student and that would be for cost per student by the district. So those are just some numbers there in the fall and I will, I'll leave this on the desktop here so, so we can send this out to you and you can look at it in more detail at some point. And then winner expenditures on here and these aren't quite finalized, we're still getting one or two bills from the winner on that. And then lastly, the challenge cup and I wanted to put some, some of the past statistics on here, so I looked back. Challenge Cup recognizes athletics, fine arts, and activities. And this is updated now up until the speech tournament, so we will get eight more points from Aaron receiving third place. But in two thousand and three, when it first started, they ranked them A and double A. Prior Lake was in, in double A at that time, so there was about two hundred schools altogether. Prior Lake ranked a hundred and eighth, two thousand and four, two thousand and five, a hundred and eleventh. And then you can see there's a, there's a steady gain. In two thousand and nine and ten, then they switched to three levels, they switched to triple A, double A, and single A. So now there's ninety-six schools that we are compared to in this one. So that gives you statistics up until last year. At this point, through our winter season, except for speech, right now, we are nineteenth out of ninety-six schools. So as you saw with our, with our kids up here, we're getting more kids to state individually and teams. So hopefully by honoring the game and doing the right things, we're also seeing results on the court, in, in the classroom for extracurricular activities. Any questions?
I want, the surveys, you said you had, had them all tallied up. Did you see much variation from sport to sport on those?
Yes, there, there is, absolutely.
A lot of variation or?
Some, yes. Yeah, we, what we do is, is Martha compiles all the data and I have them per individual sport, so in my exit meetings, I talk about those specifically with the coaches, but this is, what you're seeing is the, is the compilation of, of the entire data.
But each coach, each coach is talked to individually about?
About.
Strengths and weaknesses?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So this will be the new standard forward?
The new survey?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep.
Could you talk to interviewers?
Oh, I could talk about interviewers, very good. Thank you.
Since you know how important it is.
Board member Schimack. Yes, we had a, a winter season of basketball this year and Russ Reeves takes the lead on that one. And I'm seventy-seven, does that sound right? About seventy-seven participants. We had a Monday night league, which was ninth and tenth grade and it was basketball. And then we had one female team in that league, which was awesome because we're really trying to push that. And then on Wednesday nights, we had an eleventh and twelfth grade league and it was highly competitive and highly entertaining. I think, talk about playing for the sheer enjoyment of it. These kids went out and played hard and, and had an absolutely outstanding time. This spring, then, we're looking at a, putting up a dome on the west field and maybe, no. We're going to run a flag football league. Mr. Reeves is putting out the feelers right now on that one, so then we'll have volleyball in the fall, basketball in the winter, and then flag football in the spring and that will be coed as well. So we're just getting finished in touches on that.
That will start June first?
Yeah. Right after graduation.
On my understanding, is there are students that come and watch those games?
Oh, yeah.
So you're getting more people participating in the stands.
The students not only come and watch, they, a lot of the teams have student coaches and it's, it's very entertaining, to say the least.
Any other questions?
You'll make sure we, can we get a copy of this?
Yeah, it's on, it's on the desktop right now, so I think you guys can probably send them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Preliminary budgets with Ms. Sink.
Hey, before I begin, I also have some excellent news for our department and for our school district. The district, once again, received word last week that we have received a certificate of excellence from the Association of School Business Officials, ASBO. This is the fourth year in a row that the district has received this award. It is considered a very prestigious award because there's not a lot of districts in the state that receive it, nor in the nation, and so we are very fortunate that we did receive it once again this year. So I'm very proud of the staff in my office and all the contribution that they do during the audit to be able to complete all the requirements for this award and so we're able to receive it once again this year.
Congratulations.
Just, we go through this quite a bit as we go through the budget process, talking about our strategic roadmap, our enrollment projections, revenue and expenditure assumptions, and all those considerations for future expenditures. Going through all of our core values that drive our budget, our partnership, innovation, respect, wise stewardship, accountability, and strive for excellence. Just talking about our enrollment, again, we're still at increasing of eighty-seven students for two thousand and thirteen and fourteen. We budget four hundred and eighty-five kindergarten students for next year. We may want to look at changing that because we do have some excellent news when it comes to kindergarten. I have a slide about that a little bit later. As you can see, this is our enrollment projection, this hasn't changed since when we started this process. We did get these numbers as we went through the demographic study. Currently, well, as of last Wednesday anyway, our enrollment was four hundred and sixty-two kindergarten students for next year. And like I said, we're budgeting four eighty-five, so we're well on our way and probably will exceed that number. And so one of the things that we'll want to look at as it gets closer to the final budget is do we want to, do we want to change that number and slide it up a little bit as we move forward? Last year at this same time, our kindergarten enrollment was four fifty. So it's a nice indicator to know that we are definitely on track to reach our goal. Revenue assumptions, we're assuming one percent on the formula of fifty-two dollars. That will bring us an additional four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then we also will receive some additional revenue due to the growth in our enrollment, those eighty-seven students, that's five hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. We also anticipate an increase in special ed funding of We also anticipate an increase in special ed funding of about two hundred and seventy-six thousand. And then after the board meet, the board approves Q Comp, we will receive additional Q Comp funding, one point two million dollars. We also have set aside six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our current budget to help implement that for next year. For our expenditure assumptions, again, we have concurrent staffing expenditures, our technology lease that was approved last year, the data warehouse, which was approved by the board in the past, staff development at two percent, two hundred and forty-four thousand. We have Woolbridge funding for forty-five thousand, adaptive sports at the high school for twenty thousand. Contract negotiation costs are in the budget. Concurrent college enrollment costs at the Prior Lake High School for thirty thousand. And then again, the Q Comp expenditures of one point eight million dollars. So that has been updated again, our expenditures for Q Comp. We, the approved expenditures, that's a three, four, is the staffing to meet class size targets. Elementary staffing, two point four FTE was added, and middle school staffing to meet our current class size targets, we added point four three FTE. And then the increase of Prior Lake High School staffing, one, we, one point oh FTE. We've done this already, and I just wanted to remind you of those, that process. And then we also are looking at staffing for class size reduction. And on March fourth, we increased our Prior Lake High School staffing, one point two FTE. So these things have already been done. We've already worked on meeting class size targets and increasing some a little bit. And then other staffing that has been included, again, our special ed, talked a little bit about that earlier, of those job descriptions, those special ed positions, and then the operations support for construction and the data assessment coordinator. Expenditures for discussion and consideration, we have the class size reduction. If we want to further have some additional class size reduction in our middle school and our elementary, the cost, as we know, is sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars per FTE. And then we have some additional technology needs that need to be considered for the future. For class size reduction, the proposed additional staffing for class size reduction, we came to the board for a middle school proposal of three point six FTE. There was an additional request of a point four FTE, and in your packet, you received a letter from the middle school principals discussing her advocating for that additional point four. So the total proposed cost would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then for the elementary school, we do have a potential future proposal that we're not bringing forward at this time. But when we see the enrollment start to increase at the elementary, we know that we would like to bring forward a proposal for two point four FTE at that time for an additional cost of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, these dollars would come from our assigned category for class size reduction. In the area of technology, I know that our technology coordinator, Marcus Malazo, has brought forward those essential conditions that we have talked about in the past. These also, these costs have not been included as part of our ongoing expenditures, and we'd like that discussed at a future board meeting also and work session. We have the SIS for sixty thousand dollars of implementation, and the ongoing cost is either neutral or reduced. We currently have an SIS program, but for one year, we would cross over, and so we would have that additional expenditure just for one year.
And that's a student information system?
Student information system, sorry. The website redesign for sixty thousand, we do have part of that already in our budget. I just wanted an update on that. Safari Montage is sixty-two thousand, five hundred. That's an ongoing cost. We haven't had that determination yet of what that continuation would be. Schoolology is fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars per year. So that's an implementation and an ongoing cost. And of course, we have the Google Apps for Education. We want to make sure we have that out there because it's twelve dollars. So, but we are utilizing that program also. These areas of technology, we will be coming back to the board for discussion and do we want, when do we want to implement these items into our budget for moving forward with our technology program? And here is our 2013-14 budget. It's been replicated somewhat. If you look at the first line for our unassigned operating and the revenues and expenditures, those increases for Q Comp have been increased in those two areas for revenues and expenditures. And if you also look down a few lines for the assigned for class size reduction, you can see that we moved a million dollars out of our cash flow. We are now receiving, the shift has been reduced, so we're now receiving those funds. We felt it was prudent that we move those dollars out of there. They're no longer needed for the cash flow, for cash flow due to the shift. And so we moved them into that class size reduction, that million dollars. And so those areas that I talked about a few slides ago for the middle school and the elementary class size reduction would come from the line that's for the assigned class size reduction. Any questions about this? Yes?
The additions to the budget for the additional staff those are sustainable year to year?
For the class size reduction?
Yes.
Those would be for three years.
Three years, okay. And then the other one, you said that you might be coming back to us for an increase on elementary level?
Right, that would also come out of that same.
But wouldn't there also be additional funding because of more students?
Right now, what's interesting, and when you look back over the course of the last couple of years, what we've tried to do is really take a good look at when our students come into our district. And so right now, we're a little short in our elementary numbers, which is why we're not coming to you right now for those additional teaching FTE, because we don't, we're not seeing those numbers right now. But interesting enough, they come from the end of April through the middle of June. And so we should start seeing those numbers start to increase really quickly now. And I think they're not happening because of the snow that's happening outside. Typically, they're just not coming in, and it's just a little slow this year, but I do attribute that somewhat to the weather. As soon as it gets nice, we start to see those parents come in with those children and we see that enrollment start to grow. But that's why we're not, haven't come to you yet. We want to make sure that we see those numbers, they're in our district, they're enrolled, and then we'll come to you asking for those additional FTE.
One more question. What is Safari Montage?
I am going to let our assistant superintendent discuss that.
Safari Montage is an online curriculum repository where teachers can use it to get content that they can live stream through their smart board to students in the lesson module. So it is a curriculum resource that would be used in E-12 in our district, should be the code. We do have several committees that are piloting Schoolology, which is Safari Montage, which is an online curriculum repository, but also Schoolology, which is an online management contest, or being able to manage curriculum and communication with students through a web-based browser.
Question. Is that, are we currently using Moodle? I mean, have we used Moodle for that? So this would be in replacement?
This would replace Moodle and would offer teachers and students and parents quite a few more amenities than we just use for Moodle. But if you're familiar with Moodle, it's pretty much along the same lines.
Other questions?
And just a quick update, as long as I'm up here talking about budgets. I have received some information about the omnibus bills at the house level. We do have, they're proposing a two percent the first year and a two percent the second year on the basic formula. And also in addition to that, funding for all day, everyday kindergarten in the second year. And however, the senate side gives us one percent the first year and nothing in the second year. They're showing a four hundred dollar increase on the basic formula, but what they do is they adjust the weighting factor for our students and lower that. So in essence, it's a wash. And so even though it looks like we're getting a lot more money on the basic formula, it doesn't bring in any new dollars to the district. And they are also proposing all day, everyday kindergarten in the second year. So I feel very comfortable with what we've brought forward. It's in the middle of the road between the governor's proposal and the house and the senate proposals. And so hopefully, we're a little conservative and we'll see some additional funding come in. But this time, I do feel very comfortable with what we've proposed so far.
Further questions? Additional staff requests for 2013-14.
Yes, and now before you've got an additional staff request, this was mentioned in the budget presentation. So this is the four FTE additions to the middle level that she discussed. And looking at the impact of the four additional FTE there, what we had asked for Dan Edwards and subjects to look at was what would the impact be on those high class size peaks that they're currently experiencing in core content areas? And so what would that look like with additional FTE? The four FT, we could take those peaks from thirty-seven to thirty-nine and reduce that down to thirty-three to thirty-four students. And let me just make sure that we're clear that those are the peaks there as they currently exist and as they would exist. The averages are going to be lower than that, in the low thirties. And we certainly have average middle school classes below the thirty-three to thirty-four. But that's that impact that they can have on most highest class sizes to really try to eliminate those situations at the middle level where you're starting to approach forty, you know, and kids just don't have that same classroom experience. So that's the impact the SEPT could have. And as we're looking at it, you know, it's looking like we're on track for the students that are showing up. It's a number.
Do you have a motion to accept the additional staffing for the 2013-2014 school year for the middle? By Dan?
Second.
Second by Lee. It's not a roll call. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That carries seven zero.
Our middle, can you make that?
Sure.
This is just great news for our middle school students, and thank you to our board for accepting this proposal. Since we've moved to the sixth period day, we've been trying to wrestle with getting those class sizes to be friendly on both sides of the street. And it's been really difficult. And I think we've hit an area now where we know that with your support, we can really reduce those numbers and provide a better learning environment for students. I've been in some of those classrooms. I've been in Allison Zach's classroom just recently when she had thirty-eight students. And she had them moving around, which was absolutely amazing to me. But amid all the desks and moving things around, it was difficult to do. And it gives me a real appreciation for what these dollars can do to really reduce class sizes at our middle schools. So thank you.
Thank you. ADSIS change delivery system.
Chair Sorenson, Dr. Gruber, members of the board. This proposal, that's part of the packet, was the same proposal that was presented at board workshop earlier and seeking approval for moving forward with this for next school year. As you remember, we carried out an intervention study, and what we're looking at is revamping how we're delivering our interventions via the ADSIS program. Up until now, we've been working with a lot of teachers carrying out the interventions, being supported by pairs. This would consolidate those teachers into basically six point five teachers, with a teacher in each elementary building that would be able to deliver the ADSIS services, and it would improve our consistency of delivering the services, our fidelity of delivering the services. With communication, this group of teachers would meet monthly to review all the ADSIS services, and they would meet with the RTI coordinator that would carry this, that would facilitate those monthly meetings. And so overall, we think this would be an improvement with our ADSIS delivery program, and we're seeking your approval and would certainly open it to any questions that you might have.
Do you have a motion to accept the ADSIS delivery change for the next school year? By Tom?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any questions? I know we talk about this at the study session. Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Thank you. This is Zupert and Holberg with the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Department Restructuring.
Good evening. Chair Sorenson, members of the board, Dr. Gruber. In your board packet is a memo that outlines a department restructure or curriculum department as well as professional development department. There are several initiatives that have come through the board, but most of, probably most recently and very visible, has been the data warehouse, Q Comp, and then just the intervention study that you just heard from Dr. Kern. And all of those recommendations from those study committees are about best practice and providing a new way of supporting our teachers and providing increased support for our students in our district. And as a result, it does have a subsequent impact on how we currently provide support to teachers and support for students. And as a result of all those studies, I am proposing a restructure that aligns the curriculum department as well as the professional development department that aligns to the data warehouse, Q Comp, and intervention study initiatives, maximizes the current resources that we have as a district, and provides additional efficiencies and ultimately providing better support to our teachers and increased service to our students. There are two things I do want to point out to you. There is no additional funding request as part of this restructure. And second of all, everyone who is impacted by this restructure will continue to have a position within the school district. On the second page of the memo, I do have a couple of columns that kind of articulate what the department looks like this year in 2012 and 13, as well as part of the restructure, what it would look like in 2013, 2014. The one thing I do want to point out is in 2013-14, as part of this restructure, our district, I am recommending the title grant oversight and title program be wrapped into the curriculum coordinator position. As a result, that is recommended to be a twelve-month administrative position. But we would be using title dollars, title funds to fund the rest of that position, to make that a twelve-month position. And then the administrative part with the oversight of the grant. With that, I am seeking the board approval. Are there any questions that you have?
Do you have a motion to accept the department restructuring? No movement. By Dan?
Second. Second.
By Tom. Questions?
One question. Does this still make sense even if Q Comp doesn't, after all, go in? The restructuring?
The, as far as with Q Comp, it still does make sense. I mean, these are things that we're providing support to our staff. You know, the biggest thing here is with the data assessment coordinator, that makes sense, as well as with the title grant component being wrapped into the curriculum coordinator. This is still a recommendation coming forward with Q Comp. That is a professional development for our teachers where they're getting the peer coaching and support they need within the classroom level. You know, pending Q Comp, Mr. Mons and I have mentioned a couple of times, we fully anticipate that that is something we would move forward with and the state would approve our plan. But, you know, this is a recommendation that I would propose in light of Q Comp or not for the district.
Yeah, the one point that I just made is that absolutely none of these positions are funded through Q Comp.
This is a recommendation that has been long talked about. We've talked about the need within the department as we've taken in technology, curriculum, instruction, and assessment to really look at how we're providing services and making sure that our professional development is a strong component of that. But we're also looking at the variety of different roles that we're now being asked this department to take, including our data warehouse and the variety of positions that are here. So I believe that this is a strong recommendation that will support the district for many years to come.
Further questions?
I have another question. Jeff, it says Tulsa under a number of these positions, and that implies to me that it's not a very permanent position or that it could change. And that implies to me that it's not a very permanent position or that it could change. Could you explain why you're going with a TOSA or what you mean by that?
TOSA means teacher on special assignment. And these are positions that historically have been TOSA-based positions where we, you know, they're teachers. They're typically a nine-month or a hundred and eighty-five-day contract. And so moving forward, many of these positions will remain as TOSA's, you know, within, you know, the teacher on special assignment. One of the things that, when you look at a TOSA position, that's typically considered short-term. You know, they're classroom teachers that, you know, through these positions, these are leadership positions. So they may be applying or seeking that opportunity. You know, they may be out of the classroom, but then after a couple of years, they would go back into the classroom as well. So they are intended to be short-term positions, but leadership opportunities within the district for our teachers.
So are you saying they could switch to a different person?
They could, yes.
Okay. I mean, I like the idea of your restructuring. I think it needs, it gives it more focus and it keeps everything kind of all under one roof, so to speak, and makes all the puzzle pieces work together. I was just confused about the TOSA because to me, it seems that it should be more of a permanent position than... But maybe you're talking, it is a permanent position, but maybe not that person is permanent?
Correct.
Okay.
Was there feedback from the actual staff currently to form this? Or, I mean, were they consulted as to?
With the data warehouse, there was a strong sentiment that we really needed somebody with that tool coming into the district that who was going to take that on. And presently, looking at the department, there was a void there. So that factored into a three-year committee that was recognizing that as part of the process. With QCOM, we were also looking at that professional development support that was happening. And recognizing that through QCOM, staff would be getting a better professional development through that peer coach model. And so that was something that, you know, in our current structure, that was done by one of our TOSA's or our two district staff development TOSA's, that that may not necessarily be a need, you know, moving forward pending QCOM. And so there were several feedback channels through just different initiatives as well as the staff that would move forward in making sure that these initiatives were successful.
Further questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That carries seven zero. Targeted services update.
In your packet, you will see a proposal for targeted services programs for the summer. And as in past summers, we would like to offer these services for kids who qualify as per the State of Minnesota guidelines for at-risk programs. These are kids, these are, this proposal is cost neutral. The staff would be funded via student attendance. That generates the revenue from the State of Minnesota. So there would be no cost to these programs, but they are similar to the programs that we have offered in the past in the summer. And this can give you a brief outline of what the calendar looks like for these programs. I'm seeking your approval to move ahead with these programs for the summer school offerings.
Do you have a motion to accept the targeted services summer programs proposal? By Tom?
Second by Stacy.
Questions? Just a quick SOAR.
SOAR is an acronym used at Twin Oaks.
Okay.
It was called the STARS program previously.
Previously was the STARS at-risk program.
Oh, okay. Now with the closing of some of the schools, we've adjusted attendance. I know Five Oaks is going to have some issues this summer.
Yep, yep, and that's why we're combining some elementary offices.
Are we required any busing or anything for some of those students?
Some of them are offering busing, but again, that is being funded through the student attendance. So it is being offered within, and they're being able to stay within budget as a cost neutral component.
Okay. And then Hidden Oaks, Twin Oaks?
Those are, they alternate years as to where they house their program.
Okay. Further questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That carries seven zero. Thank you. Bid schedule for roof replacement. Mr. Dowell.
Good evening. Chair Sorenson, excuse me, School Board, Dr. Grover. I have for you a schedule for the roof project at the DSC. Bids are out in the paper this week, the twentieth, and they'll run next week on the twenty-seventh. We'll have a mandatory pre-bid meeting here at the DSC on the twenty-ninth of April. Bids will be due on Monday, May sixth. We'll have a bid opening, which is also a school board meeting. So there'll be no advance on that. I apologize, the timing is very tight for this. But that's an update on the roof project.
Moving on to the bid award approval for the 2013 Phase One building improvements.
Also in front of you, we have the bid tabulation of these projects for construction at Hidden Oaks, Five Oaks and Westwood. Parent load bidders are General Contractor McFarlane Construction, Fire Protection and Summit Fire Protection. Ventilation, HVAC equipment is McDowell Company. Test balance is the balancer. Electric went to Phaser Electric. And the automation went to Siemens for Westwood and Five Oaks and Yule Automation for Hidden Oaks. We had zero bids for piping for Hidden Oaks. And so we requested permission to pull back the bids for piping at Five Oaks and Westwood and rebid all piping projects for construction this summer.
And that will still be within schedule?
The schedule is very tight. And that's, the speculation is why we didn't get bids for Hidden Oaks. It's a very tight schedule, but we'll work with contractors and I'm cautiously optimistic.
Do you have a motion to accept the bids as Jim outlined?
No move.
By Dan?
Second.
By Tom? Questions?
I have a question for the piping, the different ones who are going to rebid it. Is it a possibility if the bids do not come in very favorable that some of this could be delayed a year or?
It's integral to the project. No.
Nexus have any ideas for us?
I guess one of the ideas is to talk to contractors and want to know that we possibly could be in the mechanical spaces September, early October. As it appeared in the bidding documents, everybody had to go out in August. We can work with them on that.
Is this due in part to the lateness of getting the approval from MDE on the bid review and comment?
That's correct. That's a big part of this.
Further questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That carries seven zero. Superintendent review process is mine. According to our board policy, we'll have a survey link go out to the board members for the review of the superintendent's goals for 2012-13. With that, we'll take those, it's open for about a week and a half, I believe, to tabulate those. Martha, is that correct, a week and a half? It's in the packet. And with that, we'll work on her evaluation and get back to you with that. Are there any comments or questions about that that's similar to the policy that we have followed in the past? Okay. And there is a timeline in your board packet for that?
And administrators get to comment as well as support?
Yes. Any questions on the timeline? Okay. Any other further questions about that? Sure.
Before you, you have a copy of our strategic framework and also a list of my goals for the year 2012-13. There is one type on your copy on the right-hand column. It says eleven-twelve for some reason, and I apologize for that. But what I've done is I've highlighted all of those components of the goals that I feel have completed to date. Although it's still April twenty-second, there's still work to be done. This year is not over. And then in blue underneath each of those statements, I have indicated areas where I think we are excelling or comments that I want you to be sure to know or something that has to do with the completion of that goal by the end of the year. But to highlight, there are three different columns. The first column is our sustaining work, and my sustaining work is as superintendent. And that's, you know, carrying out our vision, our mission, our values and belief statements and setting forth our strategic roadmap. And I'm very proud that this is our fifth year of this strategic roadmap and we haven't changed our direction or our goals. And when I think about all the reports that have been given tonight and the actions that have been taken, they certainly speak to our commitment to our vision and our mission. And to see the environmental education work that we've been, that's been happening in this district since Jim Hughes was in the classroom. We were trying to count back how many years ago that was, but we know it was more than twelve. And to see tonight, to have national recognition for our environmental education work, both at the school and at the district level, is just outstanding. And I know for this particular work that each of us are standing on the shoulders of very important people that along with Jim Hughes really made this happen and helped create that framework and groundwork for us. And I've mentioned them before, but I will mention them again. Dr. Tom Westerhouse, my predecessor, Kara Rittenberg, who was the environmental education coordinator. Jim Hughes, as well as Paul Oberg and the entire Jeffers Foundation, who has supported us as we begin to grow our environmental education program. And each of the administrators and Cindy Solberg was an elementary principal at Jeffers Pond when it was built and certainly is one of the administrators that really had an impact on us. And then all of our other administrators that are with us today in the past. That really makes me proud because I know we're building together. It isn't a stop and start, it's adding on to and continuing the good work. So I'm very excited about the work that we've been doing. And the work that is in the middle column is our implementation work. And that's the work that is ongoing, that we're really into the middle of. And you could see that tonight, too, as we're talking about the restructuring of the curriculum department, as we're talking about what we're going to do with the budget and that ongoing conversation and dialogue about the dollars that you want to put aside to make sure that we're lowering class size, not just maintaining them, but lowering them specifically at that secondary level. That's good work that we're doing now. And we can do that because we have a positive fund balance. We're using those dollars wisely. We're being good stewards of the money that our community has invested in our public school system. And because of that, we're able to say, step back and say, what is it that we really is of highest importance to you as a board, to me as an administrator and to our district? And it really has been to reduce class size and to make sure that, number one, our students are getting the very best education they possibly can. So I'm very proud of the work that we've been able to accomplish. Certainly in our first, my first few years here, we were still digging out. We were cutting, we were reducing, we were looking for ways to reformat our systems in place so that we could be in this place today. And I know, Dan, when I look at you and think about the years that you were on the board prior to this time, I was back in a time when we were in the red. And Lee, you remember that also, and probably Tom does as well, that we didn't think we'd ever get to our fund balance. And here we are, you know, right at that top, talking about changing our fund balance even, our levels of it. That's an unbelievable accomplishment of our school board and of our district to look carefully and with scrutiny to make sure that we have a model that we can sustain over time. And we've done that. And in so doing, we've also had opportunities. And taking those opportunities and using them wisely has allowed us this, tonight, to reduce our middle school's class size for next year and get those peaks down. And that's really good work. I'm very proud of all of the work that everyone is doing together, but particularly proud to be the superintendent today in this role, to see that the good work we've done. On my goals, you know, one of them is marketing our district to attract and retain our elementary students. And knowing that our kindergarten numbers are higher this year at this date than they were last year at this date is very encouraging. We know that our community is very much into social media. And adding Ashley Franks to work with Christie and with Marcus has certainly been a huge advantage to us this year. We're able to get our information, whether it's a school closing, which we're not talking about tonight, of course, or a late start, which we're not talking about tonight, because we're in a dark room with no windows. So we can talk about that. We can get that information out on Twitter and on Facebook, on our listserv, through our phone call systems and get information out to our families almost instantaneously. It takes more time to get it done than it does for it to go out. And that's the way we want it to be. We want to continue to be able to reach our community in ways that they need to be reached in, the ways that they access media. So accessing social media will continue to be a huge predominant way that we get to our community and make sure that our parents are aware of what's going on within our school district and within our community. Of certainly having the ASBO award tonight, along with the MDE award, again, for the fourth year in a row, is certainly very good news for us. And Julie's department, the business department, has worked very hard to make sure that we achieve that award every year, working through the audit to make sure that every component of it fits within the parameters needed to be awarded this award of excellence. So that's exciting. And developing this long-range plan of making sure that our facility needs are being met. This is something we've talked about for four and a half years, really, that I've been here. And I know for four and a half years before that, because we have new buildings and we have older buildings. And the older buildings need to have the care and attention so that they can remain vibrant schools for us in the future. And we've been able to do that this year by working with Nexus in order to develop a plan and then to execute that plan. So beginning in December with the approval of, by the school board of the twenty-five million to be able to use these levy dollars to be able to sustain that work. You heard from Jim tonight that they've been going out for bid now and getting the projects underway. I know the roof in this building is under repair as we speak. It's not going to look really pretty for a while or may never look really pretty. But at least it will be functional and will not have a roof that leaks. And we'll be able to have a heating system within the building that actually works. Staff members will not have to wear gloves while they type. So that will be all really good news here. But throughout our district and our older buildings, we're beginning to meet those needs. And that's exciting work as we move forward. And now we're also talking about that making those additions to the high school using lease levy funds so that we can provide a space for our students that is workable for them. You've heard many times and I've talked about that many times about the high school as we move forward. And then increasing student achievement is always number one as far as we're moving forward. And the good work that we're doing there, certainly you can see in the pages that are attached to this report. And then the Eastem, of course, I've already talked about. And creating the conditions necessary for 21st century learning skills. This has been a big year for our staff. Each of them have received, each of our certified staff members have received a new computer. They have been refreshed. Nine hundred and fifty computers were installed last summer. We are completing our smart board implementation in June with our music rooms at the high school. Have been our last rooms that have been designated as a smart board rooms. Those are really tricky and they've had to wait until the very end because they needed very specific and complicated, let me say, complicated systems in order to be viable for them to use. It was either do it right or don't do it. So we've waited to do them last because we needed to save the dollars to be put aside for that. So we'll be able to finish up the smart boards. We have Wi-Fi access now throughout all of our buildings. And our data warehouse was approved and purchased and beginning work actually this week with ties on that... approved and purchased, and beginning work actually this week with ties on that transfer over of records as we begin that process. And we chose a new website vendor just recently, and that will be ready by the fall, and Christie is working very hard on that with Marcus and Ashley, to make sure that that's up and ready for, for our staff when they come back. And then as we work through the summer months, you've heard about Schoology and Safari Montage and the Student Information Systems. Those will be the last three components of that, that, that whole package of essential conditions for us to have as a district, for teachers to really be able to access computer technology for their classroom in new and exciting ways. So we're very excited about bringing those conditions to our staff and to our students. And then the final one is really maintaining that culture of respect and rapport within our school district and our community. And you've heard before about our Decision Resources Survey and the high regard that our community has for our schools. You know, 95% of our, of those that we're communicating with said that they believe our schools are either good or excellent, and that's up, over just two years ago is up 9%. So in each of the categories, whether it's the school board, the administration, the teachers, every area of our school district, the, the response has been more positive in this specific survey than it was two years ago. The percentage of community members that truly believe that our, we are doing an excellent job has increased. So that's very important to us as we move forward, making sure that we're meeting the needs of our, our community as we move into the 21st century even further. And each of the goal areas are all related to the strategic directions, and each of them have different goals that are set underneath there. So you can see that we're, we're continuing our work. If there are things down here that haven't been completed, I have goals for them to be completed. There are just a few exceptions that will delay until next year, and one of them is to study whether or not we should bring second grade into the Sage Academy. And it's, it's been a conversation about what that assessment is, and, and have we found the right one? And to date, we have not found the right assessment to be able to have reliable data, and that's the only reason that we, that has held up that decision whether or not to take that grade lower. It, it's a complicated, again, decision to make. We want to make the right one, so we're holding off until we have better information. And the last one is the immersion concept. Mr. Holmberg is going to be starting that study in June and beginning to work on that through this next year, and talk with our community about what kinds of immersion opportunities they would like, best like to see as we move forward into 2013-14, ready for 14-15. So those are two of the goals that, you know, are delayed a bit, partly because we have a lot on our plate, partly because of the Sage wanting to have the right assessment and wanting to make sure that we're making the decision based on the right criteria. So other than that, you're certainly welcome to call me with any questions you might have that I didn't ask them tonight.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to policy. We have the second final reading of Policy 501 Weapons.
Yes, we do. Show me your circle.
Yeah, you can.
This policy is, we've had many conversations about. They, we've reviewed it with you both here and at our study sessions, and we've made minimal changes here, except for on the third page of the document under F, where it's, it will read with adoption possession of a dangerous weapon, BB gun, or replica firearm with the written permission of the superintendent or designated, and that is one of the, shall not be considered a violation of this policy if a non-student falls within one of these following categories. So we're being very stringent on this and making sure that, that if an example of a replica of a firearm is brought, that there is written permission ahead of time, and that, that is, doesn't, isn't something that would happen on a daily basis. And then on G, we're taking out that entire sentence. And other than that, there are no other changes.
Any questions about Ms. Policy Collins? Do I have a motion to accept the revised Policy 501 Weapons?
I'll make the motion.
By Lee?
Second.
Second by Dan. Questions coming? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries seven zero. Superintendent's report.
Hey, I'll try to make this short. I've been talking a bit here. I'll keep, I'll take out of my report what I've already mentioned so that I'm not being redundant. On the back page of your packet is the open enrollment application data for 13-14. These are the numbers that we have to date, and you can see that we have 144 students that have applied and been granted open enrollment status for the coming year. Most of those numbers are in our kindergarten numbers, that's 87, which is similar to last year, we had 90 total. This indicates that we'll probably exceed that number certainly for the coming year. I wanted you to have that. Second of all, I wanted you to know that we had a district crisis response team meeting here last week with our administrative team, our county and city police, and emergency responders to practice tabletop exercises in a lockdown drill. The meeting was really effective in helping us discuss the protocols and what would happen first, second, and third, and what's the role of the school, and what's the role of the police, fire, or county as we move into any kind of crisis situation. It was very good, and it gave us lots of opportunity for discussion and for following up on next steps. So we're making sure now that our buildings are all consistently prepared, that, that the protocols are all in place. They have been over years, many years' time, but we're making sure that some of those small details are taken care of now. As well as our police department and police officers are, are coming through our buildings and monitoring, you know, making sure they are familiar with our buildings and wanting that awareness of what's going on within our buildings. So that's very positive for us as well. Then last Monday was our job fair. We went to the state job fair. We took staff there to advertise positions, K-12, for the coming 13-14 school year, and there were several promising prospects were interviewed. We had an excellent presentation put, put forward by our team there that did just a great job. And then I wanted you to know that we have seven, our district is one of seven in the United States that's been accepted by NASA to bring an experiment aboard NASA's reduced gravity flight. The middle school teachers and students are testing how acoustic energy behaves in microgravity. Teachers Becky Stark, Laura Kukemeister, Terry Thomas, Ben Thicke, and Brent Stuff, along with students, including the King Tech Robotics Team, are working now with a NASA mentor to, to design and build the experiment. The teachers will take the experiment to NASA this summer. So that's going to be really exciting to see and fun for the teachers, and unfortunately, students aren't going to be involved in that part of it. And then we have just been approved to host the National College Fair with 120 colleges and universities next March 17th, 2014, here at Prior Lake High School. So that's going to be very exciting, and congratulations to Stacy Germanson for making this a possibility. So we've got good news happening this year and next year. I think that's it.
Okay. Any other administrative reports?
Yes, two quick reports, the first of which is that we did have an insurance committee meeting today, and we will be bringing forward recommendations from that committee to the May 6th board meeting, so just wanted to keep you up to date there. And then additionally, reference to the job fair, or the job that Samantha referenced, I just wanted to make sure you're aware of the, of the opportunity that we have there, and also just to quickly thank the hard work of the administrators that helped us prep and be ready for that beforehand, and also participated. It was a great day. It was very energizing to see all of the talent out there. And as part of that, too, just to let the board know that we're really trying to make sure that we're striking while the iron's hot, so to speak, and, you know, we have, we came across a number of really talented prospects. We have taken a proactive approach to posting positions earlier than we have in previous years to really try to capture the very best of the best that we can there. So again, just to thank you to everyone who participated.
Thank you, Jeff, or Julie. Any other board reports?
I don't have a report, but I guess I want to refer back to our open forum when the students came to talk about the German class. And I thought it was quite impressive that they came to talk about the passion with German. And as I say that, I don't know enough about why we can't offer it to them, and I guess I would like to find out, or the board as a whole would like to know, I assume, what we can do about it to address their need. I think it's great if they want to continue it. And, and I don't know all the details, so I guess I would like to know that, and then I think that they probably, same day, they're not here, they went home luckily from the snow, but they deserve an answer as to why we can't do it, or what we could possibly do to meet that need if it's something, separate class or whatever. So I guess I'll address that to Jeff and to Dave to get back to us on that, and I'd like some follow-up to them as well, so.
It's already in the works.
Pardon?
It's in the works.
I don't know that.
I know. There's a lot more questions than answers right now, so. Dave spoke to me before the meeting and said it was definitely in the works, they were working on some, something.
Well, I'd appreciate some public acknowledgement of what's mine.
Sure, yep. And I commend them for stepping forward, that was phenomenal. Any other board reports?
All these signatures appear to be true.
True. The ones that pencil?
Yeah, there's no odd names in Canada. No Elvis Presley's.
Future events, we have the school board meeting on March 6th, 7 o'clock here for regular meeting. I'm sorry, May 6th. It looks like March outside. May 6th with a school meeting, the district retirement celebration for our three teacher, actually two teachers and one secretary at the Twin Oaks Middle School, Library 330, and the board study session, May 20th at 5 o'clock here at the District Service Center. Any other items for the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
By Dan. Drive safe. Actually, I guess you've got to take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?